All right. Thank you very much, and welcome to everyone to the Monday, June 22, 2020 meeting of the Falls Church City Council. We are delighted you all are with us this evening. I'm going to turn it back over to the clerk to read the notice that's required for an electronic meeting such as the one we're about to hold. So, Madam Clerk? Hello?
Oh, here we go. This meeting will be held pursuant to and in compliance with the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, Section 2.2-3708.2, and state and local legislation adopted to allow for continued government operation during the COVID-19 declared emergency. Public hearings will be held electronically at this location. Public comments will be accepted only electronically at cityclerk@fallschurchva.gov. They were also accepted today until 3:00 via voicemail at 703-248-5014. All participating members of City Council are present at this meeting through electronic means, and all members of the public are welcome to view the meeting on the city's website, or on FCC TV, Cox 11, RCN 2, and Verizon 35.
All right. Thank you very much, Madam Clerk, and I'd like to formally call this meeting to order and ask that you call roll, please.
Yes. Ms. Conley?
Here.
Mr. Duncan?
Here.
Ms. Hardy?
Here.
Mr. Snyder?
Here.
Oops, I missed Mr. Lickenhouse. Sorry, Mr. Lickenhouse?
Sorry, it happens. Here.
Mr. Zia will be absent tonight, and Mayor Charter?
Here.
Thank you.
All right, so now I'm going to ask you all, wherever you might be, to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you could please stand. I'm going to go ahead and read it. You're welcome to join in with me, but I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Thank you very much. Let's now move on to the receipt of public comments. Madam Clerk, do you have any written comments to tell us about?
I do. Let's see. Life is so much easier with paper, I have to say. So our written comments are the comments that we've received since the last meeting. The following wrote with questions and concerns about a Sunday, June 7, police incident at 400 West Broad Street in which pepper spray was used, Meredith Anderson, Mary Catherine Chase, and Michael Chase, 208 South Oak Street, and Lauren Stuffle. Sean Dakin of 124 Whittier Circle provided an analysis of body cam use that was done by MIT. He asked that a clear timeline be established regarding the mayor's Obama Foundation pledge regarding police use of force. He asked that City Council ban possession and carrying of firearms in government buildings, and that the city investigate whether public newspaper distribution bins contribute to the spread of coronavirus. Toni Lewis of 500 Roosevelt Boulevard said she met with Chief Gavin, and from that conversation offered ideas about how to reimagine a police force dedicated to public safety and community empowerment. Sia Nowroji asked what concrete steps were being taken to ensure that police bias and violence are being proactively addressed. Archana Piatti requested that a commission on racial equity be formed. Ed Reinford asked for a review of police force size and cost in relation to the size and population of the city. Erica Schneider of 119 South Oak Street requested that council restrict the police department budget and instead use the resources for programs for safety and social equity. Lawrence Webb of 202 West Columbia Street forwarded questions about police training, efforts to recruit diverse officers, and whether body cameras had been considered for police. Selena Dakin asked City Council to ban guns of all types in public places. Christine and Badad Nowruzzi requested that the renaming of George Mason High School be up for discussion, and she also asked me to send that forward to the school board, which I did. Eric Pelton forwarded a petition calling for a new commission, including representatives from the city government, school system, students, Historical Commission, Tanner Hill Heritage Foundation, Mary Riley Stiles Library, and others, to examine and report on the establishment of our city and to suggest steps for weaving this history more fully into the fabric of our community, our schools, and our government. Fred Thompson at 502 West Broad Street asked if the city would consider closing off the space between Solis Brewing and Panera to make social distancing while dining easier and to help a new local business. The Economic Development Authority requested reimbursement from CARES funds for money they expended to help local businesses reopen during the pandemic. Thank you. That's it.
All right. Thank you very much.
I do have two comments that have come in under 4B, receipt of public comments, since we started the meeting.
All right. Could you read those?
Yes, and I will let everybody know, if you have any comments for this evening, you can send them to cityclerk@fallschurchva.gov. And we heard from Lawrence Webb tonight. He wrote to support TR 2028 to create a use of force review committee. He said it's a great start, just of reviewing policies for both the police department and the sheriff's departments. He said he continues to believe that we could look into the possibility of body cameras for both departments. And he said he understands there are some privacy issues that have come up when discussing their usage. However, he thinks that with proper training, officers will be able to recognize those situations when appropriate. And he thanks you for being proactive in the creation and review of these policies. And then we had Toni Lewis wrote, she said she has questions. Does the council plan to conduct a needs assessment for our most vulnerable residents? In addition, does the council plan to advocate on behalf of Falls Church residents for the expansion of services provided by Fairfax County? For example, Falls Church residents often take advantage of the Fairfax County Health Department and therefore have a stake in Fairfax County budget decisions. Will the Falls Church City Council start the conversation with the Fairfax County Board of Supervisors about our residents' concerns about needs to expand services? And that's what we have so far.
All right. Thank you very much. So now let's move on to council requests. Are there any council requests? All right. How about let's move on now to the report of the city manager. Mr. Shields?
Thank you, Mayor Charter, members of council. Just a few things to provide updates on, and then I'd also like Ms. Bawa just to give a brief Q3 financial report during the manager's report. I just want to note, in terms of the city's progress in getting through COVID-19, as a region, our case numbers have been trending down now, really since the early part of May, as well as hospitalization numbers have been trending down. Our testing numbers regionally and statewide have been trending up. And these positive signs, I think, are a reflection of a lot of responsible behavior by our citizens, by our residents, and by our businesses. And just one note that I think the Health Department is emphasizing, whenever they can, and I'll convey this message as well, that with the relaxing of mandated controls, you know, the shutting down of, through the executive orders from Governor Northam, with the relaxation of those orders, it is more important than ever that we do our individual actions as responsibly as possible of wearing masks, keeping, you know, washing our hands, staying home when sick, and those sort of key things that we need to do individually. I think that will be the key to our success going forward. We are anticipating that Governor Northam is likely to announce moving into Phase 3 this coming Friday. There is a press conference tomorrow, so we'll find out, but that is what generally I think people are expecting. But we'll see that, whether that is the case tomorrow, in tomorrow's press conference. I also just want to note our daily update that we've been providing since the beginning of this pandemic back in March. We are no longer going to be producing that on a daily basis. Now, we'll be doing the daily update on Mondays and Wednesdays, and those will be coronavirus information-centric. And then on Thursday, we'll have just regular city news with the weekly focus. So we'll return to the weekly focus. But I also just want to acknowledge that since the beginning of this pandemic, we've produced 67 issues of the daily update, and I think it is, one, a big thank you to Susan Finirelli and our Office of Communications for producing that. It's had, I think, a wealth of information for our community. And now, just looking back, I think it will be a real chronicle of how the city navigated this global pandemic. So thank you to OCOM for that. Let me turn it over to Kieran Bawa for just a very brief update on our Q3 financials. Kieran?
Good evening, Mayor Charter and members of the council. So we've done a latest revenue and expenditure review, which includes 10 months of data through April and projections for May and June. We are projecting a revenue shortfall of approximately 2.8 million, which is excluding the permit fee revenues. This revenue shortfall is expected to be offset by underspending in departmental expenditures of approximately 2.74 million, which is projected with a projected net overall nominal deficit of approximately 62,000. I would like to remind here that we are still working with two months of projections, and this includes the reduction in the transfer of CIP for city facilities reinvestment by 200,000, as requested in a budget amendment item for council consideration. That's on today's agenda. Details will be discussed at the Budget and Finance Committee on Friday, on June 26, this coming Friday at 9:00 AM. Staff continues to monitor the revenue collections and expenditures for the current fiscal years and expects to bring a further update within a month. The local revenue receipt date for some of the local revenues is June 20 for May collections, and also the second payment of the real estate is due on July 6, so mid-July. I hope to bring you a further update on this. With that, I'll conclude my report, and we'll provide further discussions on coming Friday. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Are there any questions from Mr. Shields or Ms. Bawa? So if I could ask, excuse me?
So, Mr. Mayor, just a quick question for the city manager. As we resume some of the post-COVID-19 priorities, one thing has not been acted on by the city manager, and that is the creation of a technology and innovation task force. And I'm wondering if we can have a report at the next meeting on when that will be established. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
So, Ms. Bawa, if I could ask you a question, if you're still there?
Yes, sure.
So what is the implications going forward from what you've just described, looking in the rearview mirror just a bit? Do you have any thoughts on what we might infer from what we've just heard from you?
Sure. So just to put a little perspective, on April 6, we projected, we presented projections in the change in our economic situation and our revenue collections. A moderate situation would have, we were projecting, in a moderate scenario, a 2.5 million drop in revenues, and a worse situation of about 4.2 million. This is excluding the permit revenues. So at this point, given the March and April data that we have received, our sales taxes have done well to offset some of the other decreases that have been harder, but we are within that range. And the latest numbers that we have received on unemployment show that with the businesses opening up in whatever capacity, the unemployment numbers are showing a decline in May over April. And so far, we are expecting that the revenue collections for May and June should be better than what we saw in March and April. And we'll know further when we receive our meals, taxes, and TOT on June 20, and then the second payment on the real estate on July 6. With the worst-case scenario, we are projecting our deficit to be at 2.8, with May and June kind of projected at continuing trend of what we have so far, what we have seen in March and April. And for fiscal year '21, we will obviously continue to monitor our collections and see how COVID proceeds further. If we're going to see, you know, any other drops, we will continue to monitor that and bring that back to council in September as formal first quarter report, and if required, maybe sooner than that.
Kieran, I have a question. The sales tax numbers, the grocers helped kind of buoy some of the sales tax declines with other retail establishments. Is that what you found?
That's true. The grocery, as well as online sales, that have really done a major offset and come in pretty much at budget for the sales tax.
So is our online and grocery up more than we had expected because of this, or about where we expected?
I would say that it has been above to offset the decreases in other sales from other smaller stores that we didn't receive.
Okay. Yeah, we can discuss it at Budget and Finance, but we may want to look at our sales tax forecast and just look at the blend of what we've got from online through grocery and how that might change, could even be, I don't want to say permanently, but at least here in the medium term.
Sure.
All right. Thank you. Anything else?
I did.
Yes, Ms. Hardy?
So Wyatt, with Phase 3 potentially coming on Friday, so just having observed what's been going on in Phase 2, so I know the number, the limit on gatherings goes from 50 to 250 in Phase 3, which is a pretty big jump. I think one thing that was good to do in our communications actually emphasize distancing. So even with, you know, allowing group gatherings that much, I think it's still important to maintain distance and wear face coverings indoors, because I'm not seeing that being respected across the city.
Yeah, we do need to continue to emphasize that, distancing, face coverings, washing your hands. All those things are just more important now than ever.
All right. Thank you. Anything else? Any last comments, or should we move to business on the agenda? All right, let's move to business on the agenda. And I don't know if the city attorney's on the phone. Are you on the phone, Ms. McCroskey?
I am.
So when do we, when do the Vice Mayor and I need to read our disclosures?
Well, probably you should do it right now, because the first items are a couple of those budget items. And so, and Mr. Snyder as well will have one.
Okay. Is that part of my packet, do you know, by the way?
I-
I emailed it to me, but I'm just wondering if it's in my packet right here.
I believe so, but if you need to, I can print another copy.
Well, why don't you just, can you just email it to me, and I'll let the Vice Mayor go first?
Yes, I will.
All right. Thank you. Vice Mayor, would you like to go with a statement about the budget and the like?
Yes, I will. Hold on. I make the following statement before City Council's consideration of certain matters on the agenda with regard to TOs 20-06 and 20-16, the City's Capital Improvement Program, and an amendment to the FY 2020 budget. I am an employee of the Falls Church City School Board. With regard to TR 20-25, consideration of amendments to investment guidelines, I have been in the past a part-time employee of the Falls Church School Board, and as a result, I am a participant in the city's pension plan. Therefore, for all three items, I am a member of a group of three or more persons who may be affected by these matters, and I can participate in them fairly objectively and in the public interest.
All right. Thank you very much. I've got one, too, and I'm going to go ahead and read mine. I make the following statement before City Council's consideration of tonight's agenda with respect to TOs 20-06 and 2016, the city's capital improvement program and an amendment to the 2020 budget. My wife is an employee of the Falls Church City School Board. With regard to TO 20-25, my wife is previously a part-time employee of the Falls Church School Board, and as a result, is a participant in the city's pension plan. Therefore, for each of these three matters, I'm a member of a group of three or more persons who may be affected, trying to move, we've got something in the way here, let's see, who may be affected by this budget. I can participate fairly objectively in the public interest.
And Mr. Mayor, Mr. Snyder will have a statement as well?
Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you. Although it is not required, I make the following statement before City Council's consideration of tonight's agenda with regard to TOs 20-06 and 21-6, the city's capital improvement program and an amendment to the 2020 budget. My independent adult daughter is an employee of the Falls Church City School Board. Therefore, I'm a member of a group of three or more persons who may be affected by the city's budget. I can participate in these matters fairly objectively and in the public interest. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. So let's call the first item, Madam Clerk.
Yes, we have TO 20-06, ordinance fixing and determining the FY 2021 to FY 2026 capital improvements program budget and appropriating expenditure and revenue funds for the fiscal year 2021 and reprogramming of previously appropriated funds.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Mester?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Thank you for the opportunity to bring forth the CIP for FY 21 to 26 for second reading and your consideration for adoption. Staff recommendation is to present, for council to adopt the CIP as presented. Council held first reading on May 26, conducted a public hearing on June 8, and then this evening would be your second reading. The staff report before you has no content changes. The CIP has remained as presented. The full CIP is posted to the city's website, and the staff report that's in your pack and as well as posted for the public contains additional details on specific projects. The Planning Commission, as reported previously, has reviewed this per city code and charter, and it has recommended this back in February. The delay bringing it to you this evening is due to the COVID process, and we wanted to allow some revenues to sort out, as well as work through some of the WAMADA budget costs and know the status of the WAMADA COVID CARES Act relief funds that have helped this budget. So I don't have a more formal presentation. I don't intend to go through the projects this evening, since council has had that opportunity, but I'll be glad to answer any questions.
All right. Any questions or comments? Do we have a motion?
Actually, sorry, I couldn't unmute myself in time. So Cindy and Wyatt, what I noted in the staff report for the CIP did talk about recommendations on stormwater. So I sent this earlier to Wyatt. Arlington is actually issuing, or planning to issue a bond for a large kind of stormwater investment they're making. I'd like to make sure that we understand how that downstream work might benefit or impact us, and then spend a little more time understanding what we can get done with the existing stormwater and sewer fees in place. I know that we pause kind of all future work on stormwater, at least until the fall, when we can reassess. But I think in the interim, I think, I mean, obviously, tonight we're under a flash flood watch. It's summer storm season, so I know it's probably top of mind for many of our residents. So I want to make sure that we still continue evaluating what we can get done with the money that we have already set aside in those funds.
Yeah, understood, and we are doing that. And just to emphasize, in the CIP that's before council, the recommendations for the dollar amounts are in the CIP. It's really just waiting now for a further discussion on the issuance of the bonds and the rate schedule to help pay for those bonds. But the CIP itself does have those items in the ordinance that's before you, or those investments. We are watching the Arlington County process to understand their approach, find what kind of efficiencies we can by cooperating with them. I don't think any of their investments are on the main trunk of Four Mile Run. They're all into the feeders to Four Mile Run principally, and the other major streams of Arlington County. But we're watching what they're doing, because their problems are obviously very similar to ours.
All right. Any other comments or questions?
Yeah, one quick question. Wyatt, the planning, the $200,000 for the Fellowes property, when are we going to start that process, and what's that going to look like?
So that also is a debt financed item. And Kieran or Cindy, can you remind me on what is our schedule for issuing that debt? Is that another one that's waiting for October to have a clearer sense as to where we are in the economy before we issue that debt?
That's correct. As part of the CIP, we are proposing that we will bring back a debt issuance resolution to council in October after a review of the city's revenues picture for the first quarter.
So we're at least a year in before we start that process?
Not necessarily. Not necessarily. If it's within the June of next year window, then it's only a cash flow issue, and the work can start, and we can take the time to issue the debt.
Okay.
And I would note that, however, the Rexon Park Advisory Board and staff have begun the process of community input with the survey, as council's aware, and so there is some preliminary work progressing while we wait for the financial picture to be clarified.
Yeah, I think there are two or three different groups that are out there trying to build momentum and consensus for what they think needs to happen over there. So I just want to make sure that we continue to keep public input open on that and make sure we notify folks as to steps we're going to take, so nobody's caught off guard. That's it. Thanks.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to adopt TO 20-06.
All right. Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Lickenhouse on the second. Madam Clerk, are there any public comments?
We have received no additional public comments.
Why don't you read that email address one more time, in case people do want to make comments as the evening progresses?
Sure. It's cityclerk, that's me, at fallschurchva.gov.
All right. I tell you, it wouldn't be bad if we could try to even display that during the penancy of the hearing.
I actually think it is being displayed. It was on the last meeting, so I think FCCTV is doing that for us.
Great. Thank you. All right. So we have a motion, and we have a second. Unless there's any additional comments, let's go ahead and move to a vote. Madam Clerk?
Yes. Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Lickenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mayor Charter?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero. Thank you.
Thank you. Will you call the next item?
I will. We have TO 20-16, ordinance to amend ordinances 1995 and 1996, as previously amended by ordinances 2003, 2004, and 2005, regarding the budget of expenditures and revenues appropriating funds for fiscal year 2020 for the general fund and the capital improvements programs funds.
Thank you. Mr. Shields or Ms. Bawa?
I'll take this one. Mayor and members of the council, we have for your consideration an amendment of the fiscal year '20 budget to appropriate partial use of the CARES funding and FEMA funding for expenditures resulting from COVID-19 pandemic, and also to reduce the transfers to the CIP fund for facilities reinvestment. The first reading was granted on June 8, and now it's before you for a public hearing and a second reading and final consideration. There have been no changes since our last discussion. That was on June 8. And with that, I'll open up to any questions that you may have.
All right. Thank you very much. Are there any questions or comments?
I did. So Wyatt, at the last meeting, I asked to confirm to make sure that our housing and food emergency relief amounts were sufficient before we do the next budget amendment this summer?
If I may respond, Ms. Hardy, yes, we have confirmed with staff, and the next amendment is going to be brought to you either late July-
is going to be brought to you either late July, early August, and we do have sufficient funding to get through till then.
Great. And then my second question had to do with this facilities reinvestment. So I know that by not putting in another, I think it's 200,000, what's not going to get done and is there anything that we should be concerned about?
I'll defer that to Ms. Mester.
Thank you. We worked with Public Works very carefully to prioritize the money that they needed for priority projects for current fiscal year and FY 21, and we have sufficient funds for those projects that also aligns with staff resources and ability to handle the workload.
All right. Other questions, comments?
Mr. Mayor, Dave Snyder, a question. The issue of testing continues to be a very real issue, COVID-19 testing, not only the initial testing, but also antibody testing. Do we have CARES Act money left if we need to address that, those issues, if the Fairfax County Health Department is not able to provide the level of testing that's needed and/or various elements of the healthcare system? So is there CARES Act money of the amount that we've been allocated still available for that kind of use if we decide we need to deploy it for that purpose?
Our council member Snyder, yes. This first allocation of CARES dollars is really just to get us through this fiscal year and into July, and we'll be having a discussion with you on the, on sort of the larger share of the use of CARES money later this summer. And we think that supporting the testing regime is going to be part of the things that we will, we will be using these dollars to help. And it's really just geared towards producing a good public health outcome, but also there's a, you know, real economic benefit to it as well.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Madam Clerk, have you received any public comments?
We have not.
All right. And just for the public, you are welcome to comment electronically during the penancy of this hearing on any matter of interest to you. Unless there are other, any other comments or questions, is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt TO 20-16.
Second.
All right. Ms. Hardy, and do we have a second?
Second.
It's Mr. Lichtenhouse. So Madam Clerk?
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Lichtenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
And Mayor Charter?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero. Thank you, council.
Thank you. Will you call the next item?
I will. We have TR 20-25, resolution amending the investment guidelines. One, for the city's basic and police pension funds, section 3.1, funding. 3.2, return. 4.3, ethics and conflict of interest. 12.3, investment managers. And two, for the city's post-retirement medical benefits, defined benefit plan sections 3.1, funding. 4.3, ethics and conflict of interest. And 12.3, investment managers.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Mester?
Good evening.
Anything to add from last week?
No, sir. Good evening, though. I do want to acknowledge that Chair Reiberg has joined the meeting and is available for any questions. There have been no content changes to the resolution that was presented to you at the work session. I will note that we did add in the staff report lines 26 to 41, five items that council brought up as requests for monitoring or follow-up. So we documented those in the staff report, and I will continue to work with the retirement board on those items. And the, there's no direct physical impact. FY 21 is part of this action, and the retirement board will continue to monitor and maintain assets for the funding, the pension plans to be fully funded as well as our post-retirement. And timing is requested for action this evening, so it's in place by our June 30, end of fiscal year as we move forward to the next round of actuarial valuation of our plans. With that, Chair Reiberg and I'd be pleased to answer any questions, and staff recommends adoption of TR 20-25. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, and thank you, Chair Reiberg. We greatly appreciate both of your efforts. Are there any questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor, Dave Snyder, yes. I wanted to follow up at the last, at our work session. I raised a question as to whether we're getting the intended maximum benefits to the taxpayers for the contribution to the plans from the water sale, which was roughly between nine and $10 million. My understanding is that money is being held in reserve rather than reducing the amount of payment the city is obligated to put into the pension plan. That's one interpretation. So I'd like to turn it over to Cindy Mester and whomever else to explain whether that's correct or not. That's the question, and I'm interested in knowing. As I reviewed the minutes, and Cindy, thank you for sending those to me, of the night where we allocated the money in that way, the focus was on return to the taxpayer and reduction in our obligations to fund the pension going forward. Yet this particular plan seems to fall somewhat short. So explain to me why that's not the case.
Certainly, Mr. Snyder. I'll be glad to take the first stab to that question and then welcome Chair Reiberg's input and, of course, City Manager Shields as both were actively involved in the 2014 time period where I have joined this effort after the formal action was taken by council. The 9.2 million that has been invested in both the basic and the police plan is set up as an endowment, as a trust for the perpetuity of the value to the taxpayers from that portion of the water sale proceeds. As you noted in reading the minutes, there was a discussion about some near-term, short-term capital, and the rest was invested into the plans as an endowment. The goal of that effort would be to have that base principal earning investments. Those interest earnings are then of value to the taxpayer and the city by reducing the annual determined contribution, the employer contribution by the city into the pension plan. And within the pension plan, there's a maximum that can be contributed. To date, that funding has been budgeted at $640,000, so that is a direct reduction of what the taxpayers would have to invest into the pension plan as a result of the investment earnings from that endowment. That funding, when the full maximum is not used, is set aside in a city reserve account that can help with the volatility of any investments going up and down as we see in the current market. By the virtue of that $640,000 being contributed to the pension plan from investment earnings, we have documented, as you see in the adopted budgets, $640,000 then being contributed to the capital. So there's a direct benefit to the community for ongoing investment for capital investment. So that in a nutshell is the synopsis of the value of that decision in 2014 to the benefit of the taxpayers and our city. And let me pause there and see if Chair Reiberg or Mr. Shields would like to add some additional points.
I would defer to Chair Reiberg and then maybe I might add just a little bit at the end.
Sure. I think Cindy, you captured it very well. For me, the high-level summary would be the intent of the 9.2 was to create an endowment and the earnings from that endowment, which for the last several years has been used as $640,000, that's the direct benefit to the taxpayers. And the intent is that, like an endowment for that 640, well, there's no guarantee that that intent is to be for the perpetuity. So rather than drawing down that 9.2 and depleting it after 10, 15 years, the intent and the benefit to the taxpayers is to have that $640,000 benefit in perpetuity. Mr. Shields, I'll turn it back to you.
Okay. And I, so I think everybody has said it very well, and maybe just the one thing I would add is that what we were confronting in 2017 or 2016 when we were having this debate is the fact that when the city invests its money in things that local governments are allowed to invest in, the yield is between 0.7% and 1% is what it was at that time because interest rates were so low. And by putting it into the pension fund, we do, we're able to achieve that 7% annual return. And, and the goal is to have that be a steady return in perpetuity. And of course, in any investment, there are no guarantees, as Ms. Reiberg has just noted. But by structuring it wisely, as I think the, as we've tried to do here, I think we've greatly increased the odds that that endowment and that return on investment will be there for the foreseeable future and hopefully forever for the taxpayers. So I think that's, that's a good summary of it, and we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Mayor, just one follow-up question. So does it reduce the amount that the city is obligated to pay into the pension fund on a yearly basis?
And so the mechanics of how we achieve that $640,000 of annual benefit for the taxpayers is by reducing the payment to the pension fund. So instead, the pension fund is actually getting that directly from the ROI on the 9.2 million as opposed to from the taxpayers. So it does reduce the actuarial determined contribution. And just one other note on it, that it's, it's not really in a reserve in the sense that it's handled differently than the rest of the investments. The purpose is to get the benefit of the investment in the mix of stocks and stocks and bonds that the pension fund is invested in. But when we achieve a return over that $640,000, we place that surplus ROI into a reserve and we actually invest it in a money market fund, essentially a cash equivalent, so that when the market dives, which it will do, we haven't lost that, that reserve, which is a much smaller construct, but it's there to try to protect the taxpayer from wild fluctuations in that $640,000 ROI. So that's, in a nutshell, the structure. Two goals. One, get that higher yield, which we've done, and two, provide some stability for that higher yield for the taxpayers, which that much smaller reserve fund accomplishes. Now, if we have many years in a row of negative returns, that reserve could get exhausted, and in which case, you know, that 640,000 might necessarily be reduced. But our, our goal is to try to hedge against that and avoid that situation.
Is the short answer to Mr. Snyder's question, yes, the taxpayers are benefiting from this?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Further, I know, I appreciate the explanation. I just didn't want the answer to get lost in the explanation for our viewers' benefit. So are there other questions or comments?
I just had a quick comment. So thank you for adding on the staff report. I think the follow-up items that I had requested around the minimum contribution kind of language. I think you're going to do some more research between now and I think the fall on what other jurisdictions do for the minimum contribution. I was looking through my notes. I think the implication for FY 21 with this new minimum contribution in there is no fiscal impact, but I think I wrote, jot it down, that FY 22 might have an impact about $250,000 more that we'll need to contribute into the pension plan. Is that correct?
Yeah, let me clarify that. So the range is from zero up to no more than around $250,000. So we won't know until we measure the plan as of July 1, 2020, and that value, that measurement happens in the fall, so we'll be able to report back. I think that's why the staff report has said it will, will report back in the, in the fall what the impact is. In general, when the market is strong and times are good, what this, this minimum does is say, let's keep contributing. So there'll be more of an impact when things are good and hopefully many things are good. When the market is down, like we might be seeing this year, then the impact is more likely to be zero. So the intent is to increase the contributions when, or put in a floor when times are good and when times are poor that really has no impact. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Any comments from the public, Madam Clerk?
No, sir.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I move to adopt TR 20-25.
All right. Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Lichtenhouse on the second. Madam Clerk?
Yes. Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Lichtenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mayor Charter?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero. Thank you.
Thank you. Will you call the next item?
We have TR 20-27, to approve an easement for Coxcom LLC, parallel to Leesburg Pike to serve the new George Mason High School and West End Campus development, and to authorize the city manager to execute the deed.
And council, this is, I just want to take the opportunity to welcome Zach Bradley, who's appearing before you for the first time in his role as our interim Director of Public Works. And Mr. Bradley is known to many in the community for his work throughout the city on doing pedestrian improvements and civil engineering work on, on transportation improvements across the city. And Mr. Bradley is a professional engineer who got his master's in civil engineering from the University of Cincinnati and has been managing these types of projects throughout his career. And he brings a great deal of passion and experience and knowledge to this position. So we're very lucky to have him in this role. The recruitment for our permanent Public Works Director will get underway soon and, and looking forward to that process. But Mr. Bradley, I know that you and Sue Long are going to sort of team up on these two items, this easement and then the Fort Myers Construction Contract, which is the next item on the agenda. But let me turn it over to you and to Sue for these two items.
Thank you, Mr. Shields, and good evening to all the council members. So council has requested to approve an easement for Coxcom LLC at the West End Campus and to authorize the city manager to execute the deed related to it. Staff does recommend adoption of this easement, which will allow Coxcom to pull wire through the new conduit that has recently been installed as part of the new George Mason High School and 9.45 acre economic development site. This easement is just about identical to the previously approved easements for Dominion and Verizon. It will sit in the same location and allow Coxcom to use the same conduit bank that has recently been installed. Excuse me. As part of this project, obviously, we're relocating all of the overhead lines to underground, which involves relocating all of the power communications, all of that, underground to the high school. And that is the primary focus behind this easement tonight is so that Coxcom can get out there and they can schedule the work and feed the new high school with internet and cable as needed. So there is no fiscal impact and the timing is requested to be in So there is no fiscal impact, and the timing is requested to be immediate so that Coxcom can schedule the work and have it completed on the school's deadline. With that, if I missed anything, Sue, please feel free to chime in, otherwise I will leave it open to questions.
All right, thank you so much, and welcome aboard. Any questions or comments?
Quick question, Mr. Mayor.
Yep.
Zach, I am sure you guys have thought of this, but I'm going to ask it anyway. Does this impact the commercial piece at all? And does having Cox take on this as opposed to another provider, impact anything on the commercial site going forward?
It does not, no. All of this is part of the original design intent of the undergrounding. So Cox and Verizon will both have a place, and I, I have to defer to Sue, but I do believe there are still spare conduits for, for future telecom service providers.
That's right, and there's a line for RCN as well to the high school.
Okay. All right, and we've got to give them 15 feet, can't be less than that?
They, all the utility companies have, have requested, and they insist on 15 feet. But most of the easements only allow underground facilities, so the 15 feet is just for parking trucks out there if they need to do maintenance, that kind of thing. The one difference on this easement is that it does allow above-ground facilities, but only at the approval of the city manager, and they have not requested any and have not given, but we have not given approval for any in this easement.
Okay, all right. I know the mayor feels very strongly about easement restrictions on us, so I have, I have a feeling he may have additional thoughts on this, but that's all I've got.
All right, maybe. Who else has got any comments, anyone? If not, I, yeah, I do actually have a comment or two. First off, has this been sent to our developer?
Yes, we've been working closely with them on this.
Okay. I would just suggest the city attorney that she gets in writing that they consent to this, because this is altering the title that we probably agreed to with them that we're going to deliver. And so the title now will have another easement on it, and we just want to make sure that that's not going to be a problem, so I would recommend getting them to consent in writing.
Yes, there, there's also an exception within the comprehensive agreement for matters that they have participated in creating in the title, which this would be, but I will work with, they have stated before, when we did the Verizon and Dominion ones, that they would give us their consent.
Yeah, I think it'd just be prudent to get some kind of documentation of their consent.
We can do that.
Secondly, this easement just sort of seems like it doesn't go anywhere. I mean, the school, at least as far as I can tell, doesn't seem like the school is right there. How does this line get all the way over to the school?
There is, the line runs all the way from the corner of Mustang Alley at Route 7, kind of in front of the existing Mary Ellen Helen Middle School, up Mustang Alley and around to Hickock Road, and then up Hickock and, I mean, it sort of circles the whole private development site. But it may not all show on this plat, because a lot of that is school board easement.
But it seems like the rest of it, for example, along Hickock Road, that's not school either. I mean, does this tie into any existing easements? Because it doesn't seem like it goes anywhere.
It's really, it's really just to cover where we run the wires underground that used to exist above ground.
Are, are we undergrounding the rest of the, the frontage?
Yes.
Do, do they need easements around the rest of the frontage?
On Route 7?
Route 7 or Hickock, either one.
Yeah, those easements exist, they just are, they are with the school board, because those parts of the land are school board owned.
So the school board owns the land either side of this easement, right here?
Yes.
Along Hickock and also 7?
Yes.
Okay. And they're contemporaneously granting their own easements?
Yes.
Okay. Carol, can you make sure they get the consent also of the, of the developer, or the developer consents to all of them, not just the city ones, but the school board ones as well?
Yes, I, I can, we can ask about that. Yeah.
Okay. Are these easements also relocatable? Do they have provision about relocation?
Yes, they both have at, Carol, shared language, at your request, that they are relocatable at our expense.
Okay. I would agree also about the 10-foot, the 10-foot width as opposed to 15 or 13 or whatever it is. Typically, you don't need that much, and I hear what you're saying about plant, parking a car, but I don't think they're going to plant a car or park a car right there anyway, given that it's right on Route 7. But I would just say in general, my preference would always be to have the narrow easements possible, and usually, I've found that developers or utilities will accept 10-foot easements, and particularly in urban locations. But I'll leave that to you all to work out. I think that's all I've got. Is there any other comments or questions? Is there any comments from the public, Madam Clerk?
No, sir.
All right, do we have a motion?
I move to TR 20-27.
All right, do we have a second? So that's the Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor Conley on the second, Mr. Duncan on the motion. All right, all, Madam Clerk, will you go ahead and call that then, please?
Sure, I just want to check and make sure Ms. Hardy is still with us.
Hear me?
Having some difficulty.
Can you hear me?
Oh, we got you, okay. Let me call the, the vote. Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Lickenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mayor Carter?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero. Thank you.
Thank you. Will you call the next item, please?
Yes, the next item is authorize the city manager on behalf of the city to award up to $5,698,000 in a contract with Fort Meyer Construction Corporation for the South Washington Transportation Improvements Project.
All right, Zach and Sue will give a presentation on this. This is a really important project that the city's been working on now for a long time. We, this is one of the city's, you know, biggest walkability improvements, pedestrian safety, putting in streetscape along South Washington Street, and also taking the opportunity in the, in the plaza to tell the, the history of the city, and I think a very, in a way that really brought in a lot of community voices. And so we want to just go through a few slides as to what this project accomplishes, because it's been looked at in the past, our budget was not large enough to cover all the expenses, so we went back to the Commonwealth Transportation Board and received additional state funding for the project. And so now, with this contract approval, we're ready to proceed, but I think it's worthwhile going through a few slides just to remind everybody what we're accomplishing with this project. Let me turn it over to Zach and to Sue.
Yes, so city council is requesting to authorize the city manager on behalf of the city to award up to a $5,698,000 contract with Fort Meyer Construction Corporation for this project. That number does include a 10% contingency, just in case any, any unexpected items come up during construction. And no, no, no additional money is requested to be transferred, we do have all of the money in the appropriate accounts, so we are covered from a fiscal standpoint, so there, there's no, no request on that. And staff does recommend passage of this motion. Just very quickly, before Sue gets into her presentation, this does have a focus around the, the Washington and Hillwood intersection. For those who are viewing who may not be familiar, it is a string wire intersection, it's rather dated, it definitely doesn't encourage pedestrians at all. So this project focuses around that intersection, puts in some crosswalks, eliminates the right slip lane there, kind of condenses down the, the vehicle traffic to make a more pedestrian-friendly area. It also includes a transit plaza where the right slip lane is being removed. And Sue will go over this in detail in the presentation. I mean, as Wyatt said, this has been a project that has gone on since 2008. We, we have hit various milestones throughout that time, the most important being now that we're, we're ready to be under construction and make these improvements. So, as I said, there's no additional funds, so there, there's no, there's no additional fiscal impact, and we are requesting the immediate passage of the resolution. So with that, I'll hand it over to Sue for the presentation.
And Sue, this is Cindy, just let me know when you're ready for me to advance your slides.
Thank you, Cindy, you can go ahead to the next one. I'm, hello again, mayor and council members. I'm Sue Long, and I'm going to be leading on this project to do the transportation improvements at South Washington Street. And now we're all familiar with where this is. This is just the big picture, and just provides a good overview of how the, this ties in to the Broad Street Corridor, and also up along North Washington Street to the East Falls Church Metro Station. It provides a good link to this part of Falls Church, and we're excited about the way it's going to provide that connectivity. And if you could go to the next one, Cindy, it's, this is just the zoom in on the area. It goes from Tenner, it goes along South Washington Street from Tenner Hill, where the Lincoln Development finished off on the other side of Tenner Hill, all along South Washington towards, just across from the taxi company, and along Hillwood Ave to Annandale, and that whole intersection will be redesigned. So if you could go to the next floor, thank you. You all have all driven down here before, this is going up South Washington Street, that's the string wire Zach was talking about, it's pretty messy there and pretty, pretty dangerous really for pedestrian crossings. Sorry, the first few flat slides are really quick, but Cindy, the next one shows an aerial view of Hillwood, that intersection at Hillwood and South Washington Street, and you can see where Hillwood meets South Washington, there's a sort of a free, what you call a free right turn onto Hillwood, and then if you're coming up South Washington Street, there's a free right turn, what's that, a free right turn from Hillwood onto South Washington and from South Washington onto Hillwood. So both of those are going to go away to make room for this lovely new transit plaza, which we'll show you in the next slide. So this is really the highlight of the project. It takes away those two free right turn lanes and provides a much safer and really a real feature for the city. This transit plaza has some decorative brick pavers, it has a winding bench that winds its way through those two pieces of the plaza that are on either side of Hillwood. It includes some bike parking, two bus shelters, some, and nice places to sit, and some rain gardens. And then, of particular note, we're going to add, you know, the new styles, Falls Church City style signals with the mast arms, so that will look much nicer at that, what's now a junction, just a simple junction at that corner, and we'll add the three crosswalks, which will all have ADA ramps and pedestrian push buttons, making it much easier to cross there. Notably also, will, the transit plaza will have the historic signage panels that Cindy and Cory have worked on for a long time with the Tenner Hill Society and others in, in Falls Church, to provide a real comprehensive history of the city in words and visuals. And this next slide shows what the panels will look like. This slide doesn't show you the actual language, but we do have that language available, if you have not seen it yet, to, to read through. I know a lot of work went into putting that language together. So I think that's going to be, I think it's going to be a real feature and a real stopping point. It's going to be a place people will actually want to sit down and spend some time. So I've kind of gone through this, but the next slide just runs through all the sort of major features of the project, which include redesign of the intersection with narrower lanes, removal of the free right turn lanes, a new traffic signal with city standard mast arm and poles, three new crosswalks, widened sidewalks on South Washington Street and Hillwood with new street trees and benches and bicycle parking, and the intermodal transit plaza, which we've just spoken about. And so we are hoping that you see fit to approve the contract. Fort Meyer was the low bidder, they've done work with the city before, so we're familiar with them, I think you probably all are as well. We have the funding in place so we can start construction as soon as we can get them on board, which we're hoping is next month. We have 500 days built in to do the work, I'm hoping it takes a little bit less than that, but it's definitely a good year of work, at least, and it'll be, it'll be great to get started. And that's all I have, so thank you very much.
Thank you, we appreciate it. Clearly, a lot of work has gone in to get anywhere you are today. Are there any questions or comments from folks?
I've got a couple, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Littenhouse?
Yep, Susan, Zach, thank you guys for that. The, the 500 days to complete that seems a little bit long, what's the, what's the reason that it's going to take such a long time to get that done?
That's, well, I could, I would have to look at the schedule. There's a lot of work that goes into redesigning the intersection and the roadway, I think that's probably the bulk of the time.
So a, a, a big portion of that has to do with the lead times for the traffic signal components. The mast arms can take up to six months, once ordered to actually be delivered. So that, that's a significant portion of it, and then a lot of work is dependent on having some of that in. Obviously, there's some undergrounding work and all that to do, but until those poles are in and installed, there's only so much work that can happen out there in terms of realigning the roadway and all of that, so.
Okay. I think it's a great project, one, I'm really excited about this personally, that's a huge improvement for that area, and I think that it does a good job of, of not only improving from a transportation perspective, but, you know, weaving in local history and from a streetscape standpoint, you know, starting to show some of the more progressive things that we're doing here. The, the right turn from Hillwood onto South Washington seems really tight. I know we see a lot of large trucks that come downhillwood, and if you're making a right turn onto South Washington, I don't know if that, that rendering is to scale, but I would be concerned about that turn as you start to go north. So that may be something to look at. It also looks like if you're driving a, a larger vehicle, you wouldn't be able to turn into the inside right lane without clipping that curb. You'd probably have to go over towards the double yellow line on South Washington. Have you guys taken a look at that, or has that issue come up?
We, we have looked at that. As you'd mentioned, this is a, a kind of graphical representation, if you will, so it's not quite to scale. The final design does accommodate larger vehicles, we do have the auto turn to, to make sure that that has happened. So we, we've looked at that, and we're, staff is satisfied that, that, that issue is, is not currently an issue and has been resolved through the design phase.
Okay. And then the, the last question that I have, so this contractor that we've selected, Fort Myers, is the contract amount of 5.1, we've got $7 million appropriated, what, what happens to the difference? Or is that difference eaten up in planning costs and other things?
We have an onsite construction engineering inspector that we need to hire, because it's federally funded project, there's a lot, a lot of paperwork and reporting requirements, they'll, they'll, they'll be coming in.
I'm shocked.
Yeah, so that's going to take a little bit of the budget. There's a bit of contingency that we would like to keep aside in case of unforeseen things, but.
Good answer. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. I had a few questions.
Other questions?
I had a few questions.
All right, Ms. Hardy.
Thank you, like Ross, and I'm excited to see this. While it started clearly way before our time, it's good to hopefully get it done, especially since I think this was federal money from the Obama era. So on the history panels, I was going to point out that with the discussion we had last week, that Vice Mayor is leading around kind of better understanding our history, this seems like a good place to make sure those two efforts come together. What are the timelines to get the text of that all finalized, in case we need to have any other final details?
Cindy, can I defer to you on that?
Certainly. I put up on the screen just the first page of the document, this is posted on Granicus, and it is also been shared with Ms. Conley for the work she's doing. We have spent about four We have spent about four years putting the text together with the community. It included the Humanities Council, Tenner Hill Heritage Foundation, Vipus, the Chamber, Falls Church Arts, a whole community group. And so this text is done per se. And also, as a reminder, we brought it to council February of 2018, where you provided a lot of good input. This version reflects responding to that. It's done in periods from early to 1700, and then it goes through each of the settlements and so forth. So the core text is done. This is written with the right number of font size letter and character that will fit on these panels, working with the architect for this project. And so content and core text is done now that we're at the point of working with the actual engraving. There may be some tweakings. We got to make sure the artwork, while they've looked at it, will translate into the panels. I'm just scanning a little bit to give you a sense of the breadth of this. So I would say we are at 95% done on the text now that we go into the final production design stage, and we would continue to work with our community stakeholders that provided this input.
Okay, so I'm hearing not an opportunity to update, given that we're 95% done.
Correct.
Okay, so if, when this history panel presentation comes together this summer, I guess we can, you know, either build from there and figure out if there's things that we need to modify, but I just want to make sure that we are open to the fact that we need to use a different lens when thinking about our history. While there clearly was a lot of community input over the years in putting this together, I just think it's important to make sure that we are honest. And I haven't read through this latest version. I remember when we last looked at it. My second comment had to do with the Transit Plaza itself. Is bike share being planned there? And if not, is that something we should start getting underway now?
There was a bike share station planned on South Washington Street, but not in the Transit Plaza, sort of across on the other side of the street. There was a reason for that at the time. I think it ties into a, I can't remember, to be honest, but.
If you'd like, the bike share was planned to be across the street to tie into the whole bus stop master plan, and also spacing at the Transit Plaza for the size of the Capitol bike share wouldn't fit, because we also wanted the double, quote, double wide bus stops, and, but there are bike racks available there, as Sue noted.
Thanks. So is the bike share across the street going in then?
It's part of the plans, so.
Yeah, so Ms. Hardy, it will not be part of this project, I believe, and I'd have to confirm with planning, but I believe it's part of the Phase Two of Bike Share, is what that will go ahead.
Correct. It's designed into, so it can be accommodated, but the funding is a different project. And I do, before we leave the text points that Ms. Hardy brought up, I do believe the lens that was used in writing the text had in mind the issues we're dealing with currently. But that says, certainly as we go through this, we can look at the lens to make sure it's current and reflective of that. Also, as Ms. Connolly knows, when we had the working group, we had to acknowledge that things were consolidated down to fit onto eight panels. There's a much larger history that can and should be told, and so this is just one of those resource tools, but it's not the only thing that would tell the full city's history and focus on those key points.
Last question. I know that we also have intersection work planned at South Maple and South Washington. Is the timing of that work going to be synced up with this one, so it'll just be really messy all around South Washington for a while?
That is very likely. So they are two separate projects. We're still working on the final design for the Washington Maple intersection, and it's very likely that they'll kind of just roll into each other. There, there might be a brief gap in between them, but they should be pretty close together.
And I lied, one last request and not a question. So I know that we've heard from the neighbors, I think the Route 29, I think, working group had sent, or is working on kind of recommendations on what they would like the city and the county to do. It'd be great to provide them updates on both this project, the South Maple one, just to let them know what's planned and getting approved, as it may impact kind of what the recommendations are to us, just so you know that this is coming.
And Ms. Hardy, we will certainly do that. We have a meeting that we're working to schedule mid-June with the Providence District Supervisor Staff, Fairfax County Staff, for the future project smart scale application we put in for the South Washington improvements past South Maple. But as part of that discussion, we, we will put on the agenda, have on the agenda proposed to them that we talk about the South Maple-South Washington intersection updates, and then, of course, this project as well. They've been involved, obviously, throughout the whole process. A different supervisor from Providence District with the Chief of Staff, Mike Wing, has been our constant, and so we'll be updating them, but continuing to maintain that important dialogue.
Great, thank you. It's just good to see that we're investing in the south side of the city, which I think traditionally we've done less of, so thank you for the work on this.
Any other questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Duncan?
Just one question in that sort of same vein of communications and dialogue. The businesses in this area, of course, have had 12 years to get used to the idea that this project was going to happen, and to some degree, they've seen preliminary work done up to now. But this, you know, is obviously the real deal. So could you just speak a little bit about the line that you have out to the businesses to make sure that they know when their entrances are going to be especially impacted and when turns may be restricted? What's your, what's your process of letting them know sort of week to week what to expect for that 500 days?
Well, as soon as we have a more firm schedule from Fort Meyer, I'll send some, I'll probably hand deliver or send some, some letters to the businesses out there with the schedule, and then there aren't so many of them that I won't, I'm pretty sure I'll be in touch regularly about scheduling and impacts to their businesses. It's a pretty, it's actually really a pretty short script there, so it's manageable by staff, I would say. I've already had some inquiries from the taxicab people and.
I would say we have the website for this project. We'll keep that updated, and I know OCOM will help with our social media. I do want to acknowledge that Sue's been in contact in the previous project manager with this business in this community, because we've actually done right away acquisition and easements and have done the undergrounding. So we've got a, an existing relationship with the businesses, and we'll just have to beef that up, as Sue said, once she knows what the scheduled detail is, so that we can have good messaging out there, specificity.
Yes, I would also add that if there are any impacts to parking lots, driveways, any kind of entrance to a business, that will be coordinated several days in advance, so it will not be a surprise. We, we will work with them, each business, to the fullest extent possible as well. So if they're, like, let's say it's a restaurant on their busiest days, or Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, we will do everything we can to, to only impact them on Mondays and Tuesdays. There, there obviously, there, there has to be a line drawn somewhere, so they can't say all, all five days are super busy, but we, we will work with them and coordinate with them each individually with their impacts.
And we also have had specific requests and input from Fox's Music, for example. When's the best time because of, be a little different this fall maybe, but because of COVID, but when's the best time to not impact all the students picking up the rental instruments and so forth and lessons? And so as Zach and Sue indicated, there'll be a lot of close, not working relationships.
Great, thanks for that commitment.
On, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Snyder.
Thanks a lot. If there's no more discussion, I'd like to make a motion.
I see. Why don't you make a motion, and we'll get a second. I do have a question or two or a comment or two, but go ahead and make the motion, if you don't mind.
Since I've been living with this for a while, to say the least, and I think at some point helped to get some funding for it, I, it's kind of fun to move, to authorize the city manager on behalf of the city to award up to $5,698,000 in a contract with the Fort Meyer Construction Corporation for the South Washington Transportation Improvements Project.
Second.
Hello? Mr. Mayor?
Sorry, I'm muted, so I, but did you have a question or comment, Ms. Connolly?
I do, yeah, I had a couple of questions.
All right, why don't you go ahead, and when you're done, I'll ask a few as well.
Regarding the, I'm glad you are in touch with the businesses. I'm also thinking about the commuters that go through there on a regular basis. Will we be making use of our electronic signs just to warn people as they come through that there's construction ahead, construction coming?
You certainly can.
Yes, we, we will do that. Every major change to the maintenance of traffic plan, we'll have, we'll, we'll probably be utilizing those and coordinating with Robert Goff up at the property yard. Depending on needs throughout the city, they may not stay up for the duration of construction, but any significant change to the MOT, we, we do intend to use them.
Great, thanks. Cindy, you mentioned the easements and the undergrounding, and then directly across the street from the drawing of the intersection, we've got three roads going into that intersection, and the fourth leg of the intersection is a driveway, right? Of a private business?
Correct.
And that's now closed?
Yeah. The driveway next to the optician?
Yes.
Is going, yes, it's going to be pedestrianized, closed.
Okay, so two years ago, we did a tour, a walking tour of this neighborhood, and Mr. Snyder was there, and we were talking about that the owner was going to put in a plaza and make it more of a walk-friendly area. Is that going to happen?
That's semi-understanding. But I, I, you know, we, we will, I forget what material we have in there, but we are pedestrianizing it. I think we're putting up something in to prevent people from driving down there. And that, I know my, last I heard, his intention was to create kind of an outdoor.
Sort of.
City area, yeah.
Okay. And then there will be streetscape put in too, along the west side of Washington Street? I only see one tree in that drawing, but does this project include that, or is it another project that includes the streetscape there?
It does include, and sorry, the plans show a lot more detail, and I'm happy to send you those, but there are more trees, and their streetscape goes all the way from Tenner Hill down past the, the Carinas on that side of the street.
Okay, so that, that whole block and a half there?
Yes.
Okay. And then as far as the history panels go, we did talk about those in the history group meeting, and I just shared them today with everyone who attended that meeting, because I reread them myself, and they're really very well done. There were a couple of things where I thought, oh, we should change that word, or that, the way we phrase that based upon what we know now that we may not have known in February of 2019, but they're really very well done, and they cover a lot of the history of Falls Church, as Cindy said, chunks of the history of Falls Church. But it'll be nice to have that up there at, as a public piece of art and history in public. The one thing I request, and I don't know if it's even possible, but where we have 1950 and beyond, we kind of end it in the 1960s, 1970s there, and there's nothing about the addition of our new land at the high school or anything like that. So I don't know if there's, there may not have been space to add that, but I just wonder if, as we're looking at that, we, there's a way to add the fact that in 2014, Falls Church was a 14, 2014, Falls Church added land for the first time in our history.
We can certainly look at that, and certainly those words that you identified are things that we could certainly look at. I know we had quite a discussion on the adding of the land, so I'll have to go back to the notes with Cory Genicelli.
Okay. But it's really, it's very well done, and I remember how many back and forths we had on this, so. So it was great to read today and go, oh, people will like this, they'll get it. That's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Other comments or questions? Let me ask you, does this also include streetlights?
Yes.
Okay, good. You know what, I think that's it. All right, so we have a motion on the table. It's been seconded. Madam Clerk, are there any public comments?
There are no public comments.
All right, why don't you go ahead and call the vote then?
I will. Ms. Connolly?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Lichtenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
And Mayor Charter?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero. Thank you, counsel.
Thank you, and our next item is a busy consent agenda.
Actually, we have one more resolution to consider.
Oh, I'm sorry. My apologies, I skipped ahead.
We have TR 20-28, Resolution to Create a Committee to Review Police and Sheriff Policies and Procedures and Make Recommendations to Reform Use of Force.
All right, Mr. Shields?
Thank you, Mayor Charter, members of council. Mr. Mason, our staff lead for this item is on the call, and so I, I will defer to him, and I think we just want to cover the changes that were made in response to council comments at work session, and we'll review those and take any further comment on them. But the request is to adopt this tonight, and then we would, Mr. Mason can also describe the process by which we'll get word out and solicit participation with this committee.
Thank you.
Mayor Charter, a member of, Mayor Charter, a member of councils, good evening. Yeah, we did include, since the works session last week, we did include your concerns in regards to the possible fiscal impact, also in regards to including a member of the schools, public school system to be included. One of the main things that I, that I want to briefly speak about is the positive energy that's being generated in regards to, to this initiative, both from within the city government, the police department, and the sheriff's office have both cooperated fully in regards to already supplying copies of their use of force policies and procedures, and then also in regards to other city departments that I have spoken to, and they're interested in this work to see how it might affect the city government in the future in regards to possible reforms. Then in regards to the positive energy that's being generated within the community. Chief Gavin has had me in meetings that she has been conducting with members of the community, and also I have been fielding calls from the community in regards to this work, what the initiative is all about, and their excitement about possibly being included in this initiative. So overall, we did include your concerns in regards to this work, and I envision that once this, once you approve this and this committee is formed, that we will begin our work the first week of August, and initially meet biweekly, but it's going to depend on the committee and how they feel about the work, and how much work they believe is, is will be involved. And we'll look at also having a report to you sometime in November of this year.
All right, thank you very much. Let's go ahead and see if there are any questions or comments. Any comments or questions from Mr. Mason or Mr. Shields?
Just a quick comment, Mayor.
Yes.
So thank you, Mr. Mason, for that. Just a note for the appointments committee and for the public. I know there's been a lot of public interest for this. The city clerks worked really hard on coming up with a process and timeline to meet the quick turnaround of standing up this committee. So I believe applications for this open tonight, and will be open until July 5th, and we're planning on the appointments committee interviewing all the interested applicants on July 15th, and then making a recommendation to council for our July 27th meeting.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Yes, actually, we had to hold off the applications until open of business tomorrow morning. That's when all of the application will go live. So tomorrow morning, and I can give you the direct link to apply, is on our website, fallschurchva.gov, and then it's backslash B as in boy, C as in cat, apply, B C, apply. And then you'll be able to see, actually, all the openings we have for volunteer opportunities, but there will be a specific link to click for, for this committee.
All right, thank you so much. Are there other comments or questions?
Mr. Mayor, yes, just a, a quick suggestion. As I'm reading the whereas clauses, they're all sort of national in scope, and certainly agree with all of them. I wondered if we could add an additional whereas clause. I wondered if we could add an additional whereas clause along these lines, whereas the city of Falls Church has previously reviewed its policing policies to assure that they complied with best practices and deems it appropriate to review them again. During our discussion last week, I think we all made it clear that we have worked through these issues in the past. Our chief was a national leader during the Obama administration and I just would like something in there that indicates that this is an area that we have considered in the past and deem it appropriate to consider it again based upon recent developments, you know, or based upon the, the current discussion or requests of citizens. But in any event, I just wanted something in there to suggest that we have been working on this over some time and constantly want, have made improvements in the past and want to keep making them.
All right, other thoughts on that proposal or any other questions or comments? Let me ask the city attorney, do we have to actually get that language written right now, Ms. McCroskey?
As long as the concept is clear, you can leave it to staff to put the exact words in there later.
Okay. Are there other comments or questions either relating to that or other aspects of this proposal?
I like that, Mr. Snyder's proposal and I would second it, support it.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Conley. Other comments or questions?
Mr. Mayor, I agree with the vice mayor and Mr. Snyder, that's a good addition.
All right, thank you. Other questions or comments? Madam Clerk, has any member of the public sent an email in about this?
No, only Mr. Webb's previous email supporting it.
Gotcha, okay. All right, are there any other questions or comments? So do we have a, we don't have a motion yet, do we? So can we go, would someone like to make a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I moved it up 20, TR-20-28.
With the addition of the language Mr. Snyder has suggested?
Yes, thank you.
Second, Snyder.
All right, Mr. Snyder on the second. Any further comments or questions? All right, Madam Clerk?
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Lichtenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
And Mayor Tarter?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you all, thank you, Mr. Mason in particular, we appreciate it.
Thank you, looking forward to the work.
We are, as we are as well. Our next item is the consent agenda, which is actually fairly voluminous, but unless anyone would like to take anything off the consent agenda, we can do it in one fell swoop. Is there anything anyone wants to remove from the consent agenda? All right, would someone like to make a motion then?
I move to adopt the consent items.
All right, all right, Madam Clerk?
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Lichtenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
And Mayor Tarter?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right.
Six to zero.
Thank you very much. So we have a few other matters, but you may all recall, we do have a closed session planned for tonight, so keep that in mind. But let's go on to our last matters on the open agenda. Is there any business not on the agenda that people would like to discuss? Any standing regional committee or council liaison reports?
Mr. Mayor, just a note that the NVTA Subcommittee on which I serve voted to include the Shreve Road project in the funded items and that now goes to Mr. Snyder and the mothership committee that he serves on on that vote in July, I think, is that right, Mr. Snyder?
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, if I might, and thank you, Councilmember Duncan, I also want to recognize Council, Councilmember Letty Hardy for her work in, in encouraging grassroots input. Our two projects that we requested funding for, both received a lot of citizen input, so Councilmember Hardy, thank you very much, Councilmember Duncan, thank you for your work, especially thanks to Cindy Messer and our entire transportation team. So not only, the next committee meeting was on Friday from 5:00 PM to 7:00 PM and that committee is sort of the final in a chain and it unanimously recommended not only the Shreve Road projects, but also the Park Avenue project as well. That came about because of funds that are potentially available from some, the cancellation of the VRE project and it was really the result of a lot of work by a lot of folks here and our citizens. And so far, we are moving forward in a very positive way on both of our projects, but it remains to be seen, of course, the final NVTA approval, which will come in July. So a very good outcome as a result of a whole lot of effort by a lot of folks. Thank you.
All right, and thank you. I don't know if you mentioned yourself, but we greatly appreciate your work as well, Dave. All right, any other council member comments?
Couple of questions, I don't want to cut in line, but maybe I'll start and finish up. Have we picked the date for discussing the gun ban, which the manager sent us a note about this afternoon?
Councilmember Duncan, we have not scheduled this work and with the work of this group that Chief Gavin put together, they have given, I think, councils sort of a broad range of options to consider and some information that hopefully will be helpful to the city council. I think in it, in evaluating where the council would like to go with this, it could be an item that goes before the government operations committee just for an initial discussion or we could bring staff's recommendation to a work session. We do think it would be helpful to get a few more regional examples. At this point, we simply, we just have the Alexandria example. I do think it probably would be helpful to get Arlington's in particular, but also Fairfax and others in Northern Virginia. And those have not been available to us yet.
Okay, others may have thoughts on that. I just want, most important thing for me is to just make sure that when we do discuss it, that the folks who are interested in that issue on both sides are aware, you know, when we're going to talk about it and when they have opportunity to public comment. So that's all I have on that, I think, except to note that Tarter's birthday was last Friday and we're not going to sing happy birthday, I guess, but anyway, happy birthday to the mayor.
All right, thank you much, thank you much. Other comments or questions?
So I was going to bring up the firearm item as well. So I'd like to see it scheduled for a work session. We can do GovOps before that if we happen to have it, but I know that we're waiting for our neighbors, but I think this is a case where I'd like to see us lead and not necessarily have to follow. I know Alexandria is already adopted, but I think it's been talked about by this council for so long and even previous councils, now that we have the power to do something, I'd like us to move forward with it.
And Mr. Mayor, this is Dave Snyder, I would like to totally agree with Councilmember Hardy, I'd like to move forward on this as well. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Other comments?
I would as well, and I know that the Alexandria ordinance was written in such a way that it fits exactly within the parameters of the state law. So I think it is a really good starting point. They said that they carefully reviewed it to make sure that it did fit within what the state law was and they're doing the maximum that they can and not overstepping that. So I think that is a good place to start and I think others will also be looking at Alexandria. GovOps meets tomorrow and then doesn't meet again until the end of July. So I'd prefer to see it in work session in July, not wait until August till GovOps looks at it.
All right, thank you. Other comments, questions?
I just, also just want to say to the city, to all of us, that I think it was admirable and important that we declared a staff holiday on Friday for Juneteenth. The governor tossed that one in on Tuesday as a new state holiday that was important for the state to commemorate and I think the city of Falls Church did the right thing by joining in and declaring that a holiday. So thank you, Mr. Shields and others for making sure that happened. And I think that this firearms ordinance is another way that we can, as Ms. Hardy said, lead on this one. We don't, I don't know that we need to wait for others. And then my last, when does court open in Falls Church? When do we expect that to come back?
Wednesday, July 8th.
And how often will they be there?
Every, every Wednesday. And I beg your pardon?
Does it start at 9:00 AM?
I don't have the details, I can get those to council.
I think it starts at 10:00, I think court starts at 10:00.
At 10:00, so it's every Wednesday and is there other days as well? Family Court is on a different day?
Yeah, Juvenile and Domestic Relations Court is on every other Thursday, I believe, or maybe Tuesday.
Tuesday, Mr. Sheriff.
Every other Tuesday.
And they, our chief deputy sheriff, Matt McKay, has been working with the courts because they have a very high backlog of dockets, so I think it will be 10:00. They're going to be taking some breaks so we can control social distancing and so forth. And there'll be a higher frequency of Wednesday dockets for a period of time, we anticipate.
Okay. And is there going to be any kind of recognition when it opens on, in July for the first time? Are we just going to open and go forward?
Well, I think we do want to do some recognition. Now, the judges, of course, were invited to the council's ceremony that was held when we moved back into this renovated building, but I think there will be some.
Actually, a year ago today.
Oh, really? It's been quite a year. So we will have some pomp and circumstance, but I think the judges will be primarily in charge of that, but let me get back with council on, on how we want to handle that.
Okay. And then my last question is, we have, there's a Republican primary election tomorrow and we're all set to go on that one? Are all three polling places open in Falls Church?
Yes, they are. And so our registrar's been working very hard to take care of everything that needs to be done to make that happen.
Okay, very good, thank you.
I'm at City Hall and I've just seen him here recently, so he's working late to get ready. So other comments or questions before we go into closed session?
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, I forgot. The Economic Development Committee meeting is Thursday, virtually at 9:00. Agenda went out, posted by the clerk this afternoon. Everybody's welcome to dial in from wherever you are.
All right, other comments or questions? I would echo my colleagues, not concerned, but pushing to get our gun legislation as soon as possible as well, so for what that's worth. Any other comments or questions? All right, so I now have a motion to go into closed session and I'm going to read that and see if you all are agreeable. It is 9:17. Upon a motion made by council member.
Duncan.
And seconded by council member.
Hardy.
And passed by a vote of city council, council wanted a closed session pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A3 for discussion or consideration of the disposition of publicly held real property where discussion in open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body. This is the inside proposal for purchase of public parking parcel adjacent to park place. Vice Mayor Conley? And councilmember Duncan?
Yes.
Hardy?
Yes.
Lichtenhouse?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Z is absent. Tarter, yep. Okay, so do we need to take a short break to get the cameras off? Madam Clerk?
On behalf of the clerk, I'll say yes. If you give me a moment, I'll come back and confirm when the cameras are off.
All right, I'm going to take a short break, so maybe you could just at least give us two or three minutes. All right, welcome back. We are back, coming out of closed session. We're going to read a motion to come out of closed session and then a certification. Upon a motion made by council member.
Duncan.
Seconded by council member. All right, Conley. And passed by a vote of city council, council reconvened in open session. Vice Mayor Conley?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
Hardy? Hardy? Letty, are you there?
She was muted. You're unmuted now.
Letty? All right, we're going to go to Mr. Lichtenhouse. Mr. Lichtenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Z is absent. Mr. Tarter, yes. Ms. Hardy, you there? Okay, I think we lost her somewhere. All right, so let's go on to our certification.
That is a yes.
What?
She wrote it on the screen.
Excuse me?
She wrote yes on the screen.
She wrote yes, I don't know if that works, but let's call it a yes, all right. Certification, upon a motion made by council member.
Duncan.
Seconded by council member. And passed upon affirmative roll call vote in open session, it was certified that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed or considered in the closed session or meeting by the body. Vice Mayor Conley?
Yes.
Councilmember Duncan?
Yes.
Hardy? She desperately pantomiming yes somewhere. All right, I'm going to take that as an absent, Mr. Lichtenhouse?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yeah.
Z is absent and Tarter says yes. Mrs. Ms. Hardy, are you available? Okay, some technical difficulties. All right, so we are at a closed session. Anything else before we adjourn?
No, we don't meet next Monday, do we?
No.
It is the fifth Monday, is it not?
Okay, so we, we're in work session then on July the 6th is our next meeting.
Yeah, and we'll have the 10-acre developer there, I believe. All right, so anything else or should we adjourn?
I was a yes.
Okay, good, good. Yes on both of them?
Yes, I couldn't unmute myself.
I thought that might be the case. So you're a yes on the certification and yes on coming out of closed session?
Yes, please.
Okay, all right, sounds good. Anything else before we adjourn?
No.
All right, let's say it, we're adjourned.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.